For second. Thank you. Welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Winter downtown. First in order is. Okay, we're gonna have that three-minute public comment period. Anyone may approach podium and speak on any subject for three minutes if they so wish. Any takeers? Okay, the record show no one has chosen to speak. All right, item number 170, consideration of grant and seller permit applications. Okay, from the Ramblers Roadhouse.
I move to approve the transient seller permit for Volicious. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We'll let the record show all in favor of James Stildow. I mean.
It's my mic speaking. Speak with this.
Try it again.
I'll move to approve the transient seller permit for Volicious.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? The director of all in favor, James Stildow. Next, for you.
I move to approve the transient sellers permit for Vittles and Variety.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Director, all in favor, Matthew Stildow. Okay, we're through those. Okay, item 171.
That's Jim Stil, by the way.
What's that?
That's Jim Stil, not Matt Stil.
You're right. Maybe you better turn the name plate my way. There you go. I don't mind the occasion. Presentation of the conference plan updated by the Conference of Planning Committee and Katie Cobb. I'm just hoping we got that microphone working over the podium. Well, well, people are gathering. I need to point out that anyone who wishes to speak, and I'm going to allow as much speaking during sessions as I can, they need to queue up at the podium. It won't be recognized when people will explore. If you didn't just line up, thank you. Okay, I'm ready, but we're ready.
It's also. Thank you, council, for inviting us and giving me the opportunity to present. Let me introduce myself, and then we'll each introduce ourselves. I'm Pat Sabre. I'm a co-chair of the Conference of Plan Committee.
I'm Penny Cray.
Pat.
Yeah, I'm the co-chair. Scott.
And now with us tonight is Kristen Shunway. She had a longstanding commitment called birthday. We currently have, the last status of the plan was submitted draft edits, and beyond that, we are not aware of the immediate status of the plan. A year and a half ago, we started, and let me first thank the crafters of the 2010 plan. That was an incredibly well-done document, and it was a good springboard for us to jump from. And it carried us for a decade-plus. And we were able to use a lot of the content from 2010 and carry some of that forward. So we want to thank our credit system. Would also like to extend immense thanks to Katie Cobb. We had significant contributions from our KB Cobb Planner, who did all the data mining and a lot of authoring. And without her contributions, this would not be where we are today. At the outset, a lot of interviews were done with townspeople, the town manager at the time, the town council chair. And we eaked through and discovered four very, very critical areas of key intent for the future of Winthrop. And those became our focus areas for the plan. They are housing, affordable housing, and that ultimately led to zoning ordinances and land use. Recreation and more cross-point are important to our Winthrop community. Our downtown economy and revitalization. And finally, municipal staffing was a critical issue, not just for Winthrop. It's a nationwide issue of staffing. So those were our four key areas. And I think the most important part of what we've done to get where we are is little list. How we worked, we interviewed 40 to 15 individual community members before we even got started. We interviewed during our data gathering municipal staff, apartment heads. We had regular sessions with town managers and Katie Cobb. We had monthly public meetings. We worked with several Winthrop committees during our process. And we. Getting my notes. We actually reached out to a couple of neighboring communities as well. And that was specifically to speak about housing and regionally addressing that, collaborating with Reedfield and Faya and so on, as well as working with Bitterford on learning how they renovated their accomplished center. So a lot of regional conversations with other communities. And without Ted, we wouldn't have been able to keep on top of LD 2003 and his ongoing conversations with state and local organizations as well. So probably the best way for you to hear how we did this was to hear from Pat Latta and how she worked through the process in order to work on our housing chapter and our land use chapters. Hello. Hello. I saw you talk about housing, existing land use and future land use. They are all intertwined together pretty extensively, so I may repeat myself in some of the concepts of housing, going through the existing land use and future, et cetera. So in working on this, we met with the planning board, the local codes enforcement officer. None of these ones, many of them. The utility district, the chief of police, local railtors, the owners of the problem, Wall and Mill, and we looked at other underutilized buildings in town to see where we could potentially put housing. We talked to the main state housing authority. We attended classes and sessions. I worked with the local multiple listing service to corroborate the data that was gathered. And we talked to different state agencies, both the LD 2003, that's coming to talk about more affordable housing throughout the state. It's a law that's been passed. We just have to figure out how to implement it in our town. And then many citizens in town, and I have to thank Steve McDermott, who is our local resident expert on housing, and I've come to realize, and we've leaned on him quite a bit. So during all these discussions, it became very evident that we, our town, has some specific housing limits. Some of those. We had to look at how our seasonal use housing has more since COVID would be more people working at home, so we don't have just seasonal use, but they are more than seasonally. They just may not be here full-time. We looked at the condition of the house stock in town. Does it need to be upgraded? And can we get grants to do that? We looked at the existing housing that we have and the median price of that housing, and then the median people's income to see what can be, can our townspeople afford the house that we have? We drilled down on the number of rental units and prices for those rental units. And again, the median income, and can our people afford the housing, rental housing that we have? We didn't find significant growth in population in our town, but we're finding significant change of use of that. So if the little old couple raised their family there, and they had five people living, six people, seven people living in the house, and now all the kids have fledged, and we have a person that's passed. We have one person where we used to have five, six, seven. Maybe an underutilized building, and where can that person go? We don't have right-sized houses for those people. We don't have enough small housing to manage our workforce that's in town. I've gone off script, so give me a minute. So in working on right-sized housing, we're trying to make it so people can age in place in Winthrop. Whether you graduated from high school or college and wanted to stay in town, can you afford to live here? And whether your family's left, can you find a house that will work for you? And we try to address those things through the land use chapter, through the existing and future land use, as well as the housing. We looked in the policy and strategy section of the housing to define growth zones in town. We looked at maybe saying that growth zone might be the village area where you can walk to schools, services, the downtown area, so maybe more dense housing within walking area, and that gets addressed in the zoning. We looked at making overlay districts, so you don't have to specifically change zoning, but maybe make an overlays zoning district in a residential district that allows for more dense housing. And we also look to have different types of zone, whether it's cluster housing, planned use, developed, planned use development, I got that wrong, and then condos perhaps. And then we are trying, we are suggesting a great need to develop guidelines for accessory dwelling units, which LD 2003 is saying that we have to have in town. What does it mean to have an accessory dwelling? What size is it? How dense they can be? And we just need some rules for that, guidelines to go along with that. So we did, did come down to say that we have to have affordable housing stock in town. We just don't have that. So then the land use, that's kind of an overview of the housing. In the land use section, we looked at historic growth in town and how the town has morphed over time. And, and all of the zoning districts are defined in there, and how they are supposed to be used, and how we hope to have them used, like the village zone, like I talked about, walking to town, and designated growth area. And then we looked at commercial and retail. Do we have a need to expand those zones? Our commercial and retail has grown in the past. We don't expect an explosion of that, so we didn't feel that we needed to expand those zones at all. And that's outlined in there as well. In the residential area, we'd like to make more dense housing, but we're constrained by the miles that we have or lack thereof, miles of public sewer system. The easiest way to make dense housing is to be on a public sewer system, and we just don't have that. We'd like to suggest that we perhaps obtain a grant to get some sewer systems developed. That's a little hard. The current septic system, sewer system in town can handle more dense housing. So I'm looking at perhaps encouraging the reduction of minimum lot sizes to get more dense housing in the residential areas in town. But we do understand that there's a constraint to expanding the sewer district. So we can't just limit it to going on what can be expanded in the sewer district. We think it's also very important to safeguard our natural resources, our land, lakes, and our natural resources in town, and not let those become overly populated. So we're not recommending growth or change in the zoning in the water areas. And that, again, is outlined in the policies and strategies. So when you get into future land use, we're looking to this as a map to the guideline for our town for the future. How we want to grow, how we want to change, how we want to stay the same. And we look at our town to, again, preserve the natural resources. In this chapter, it's a very important chapter of defining the zoning changes that need to happen, the growth areas that need to happen, the areas that need to stay the same. So we have to, you have to pay very close attention to the future land use section. The, this chapter reviews the 2010 plan, what directions were given, how we accomplished those, and if we need to continue in that direction, if we need to float away from that, and maybe get to change it somehow. Again, we talked about the shoreline zone, any of the shoreline water zone, public water supply, resource protection, shoreline, not changing those zones to not allow more dense growth, because we need to protect our lakes. And then in the rural district, we want to be mindful that it's the rural district where it has larger lots than perhaps in the village zone, and to keep that rural character. But we're not looking to drastically change that zone. Our anticipated growth in town and population does not seem like it's supposed to be significant. But a lot can happen in 10 years. We have to have a good roadmap for planning for the future. And we feel like the strategies and policies have sort of outlined that very well. Our goal was to have manageable, attainable goals, some things like having a more prominent gateway into town. Those are easily maintained, achieved, and then looking at the underutilized buildings, encouraging through TIPS, through other grants to get more housing, perhaps the Carrefour Wall and Mill project. We toured that, and it's a great place. If you look at what happened in all of the old mill there and all the housing that created, we have the great opportunity here in town. We really need to work towards looking at the underutilized buildings, whether that's 48 Main or the whole nursing home or the Carrefour. We don't need to just focus on one. We do have several underutilized buildings in town. Also trying to encourage mixed use in the retail zones, where we have offices on a main level, and really encourage housing and quality housing in the upper stories of that. I think that's pretty much it for those three zones. Those three chapters, you really have to look at the strategies and policies and pay attention to that. We've given the edits. We haven't seen the changes that we've made, but we do need, once it's all 100% complete, I think we will scrutinize it, and I hope you all do too, and put a lot of work into it, and hope it is a good guide for our future.
Thank you, Pat.
Good for Pat to come out this evening to present our information that we have worked very hard on the last year and a half. We have worked with the Conservation Committee, Winter Plays Outside, the YMCA, Winter Recreation Committee, and the Winthrop Main Historical Society. We also have his support, as Pat mentioned, from Reedfield, Faya, and local town officials, which was extremely interesting and gave us lots of really good information. We want to thank Jeff and Anthony, our town managers, and also the department heads for meeting with us, talking to us, giving us their input on what they would like to see. I personally interviewed Police Chief Matt Burnham, who's Public Works, and many people in the downtown area last year, and they all had some wonderful, workable ideas that will be hopefully included in this plan. We sent out questionnaires twice. First time it was mostly to the general public, and we got some really good feedback. And then this summer, we actually went around and talked and left a questionnaire with all of the businesses on Main Street. And unfortunately, we handed out about 65, and we got maybe 20 back. A lot of people didn't feel it was genuinely needed to say it or didn't want to say things, certain things. I wish that had a little different outcome, but the things that we did get and the things that we learned were very interesting, and I think will be helpful for the plan. And again, we would like to just thank the council for having us do this. And as Pat said, the plan from previous plan was a wonderful tool for us to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, which is speaking. Okay, do you count for us have questions for the committee? Okay, great.
I was just going to ask Pat Latta if she can just expand for the community a little bit on what overlay district is.
So the overlay district is, so in our town, we don't like to do spots on and changes. We don't like to say, oh, we want to have a condo development here. So we don't want to change the zone for that one area. So a zoning overlay district allows for, in a certain area that might not be expensive, you have an overlay on it, which would say, just in that area for this use, this would be allowed. And it's not changing the zoning itself. It's allowing a specific use on top of the zone. As I best understand it.
Couple of other questions. While we're on topic, you also described some of the condition of housing that you looked into. What kind of conditions of housing did you see? And you mentioned grants. Are there any types of grants out there that you are aware of to help with that? That you can discuss and present to the community?
So initial housing, because I saw houses, I get into a lot of houses. And I think our housing stock has improved significantly, but we're not so, we're not that wealthy in community. So people don't have deep pockets to perhaps repair the roofs, update their plumbing, update their wiring. And there is some substandard windows, single-family windows that we see. We see non-existent septics, if I can say that in public, and wiring, plumbing issues that just need to be updated, and that we could get grants for to help our community improve the housing stock, which would go all for our town. And Steve can help in other ways.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So housing stock and housing condition, you're talking about different systems generally.
Steve, will you just introduce yourself for the record? We don't want to go over the top of it.
Steve McDermott, nice to see everybody who is in Winthrop. So when we're talking about different, different systems, you can generally think of efficiency made as offering the broadest types of grants to residential homeowners or to multifamily residential owners. But broad redestruction of housing would generally, there's limited grants available that do happen sporadically, but not as standing grants.
Okay, thank you. And then also, just kind of going off, you had mentioned from the 2010 land use plan, and we need to go in another direction, from the 2010 land use plan to the current plan. Did you see any big differences or changes as far as, like we talked about in certain areas, they're currently rural, or maybe turning that into a residential area? Are there any proposed areas that have grown or changed? Or are we still looking at kind of similar to what we saw in the 2010 plan?
I believe it's relatively similar to the 2010 plan. We are trying to get more houses, so make more dense areas within the town proper. But overall, our housing pattern of growth has stayed significantly the same. For the most part.
Okay. Thank you, my role.
Wait, go ahead.
Hey, sorry about that. I should have mentioned the mobile home replacement program that Maine Housing offers if we're talking about housing initiatives in a mobile home, which is a technical term that HUD uses to describe manufactured homes that were developed or built before 1976. That is a standard program that's offered by Maine Housing. So it won't repair your own, but it'll actually pay to replace a mobile home built before 1976.
Can you say it one more time? Was that last one?
It is the Mobile Home Replacement Program administered by Maine Housing.
Thank you, Steve. Any other question, your comments from the board, council? Okay, speakers from the audience, please feel free to come to the podium, line up, and introduce yourself when you begin to speak, please. And we do have a three-minute interval on this one.
So this gentleman is Joel Marine. He's the planning director for KB Cobb. I mean, the Cobb was also wanting to provide you some of the don't view.
We can make the exception for Joel for the three-minute interview. I just had to make that announcement.
I'm trying to give you three minutes, don't worry. Yeah, I managed all the planning directors with KB Cobb. We've really contributed to the town to assist with this update. I'd like to thank the Conference of Plan Committee specifically for all their hard work. We've done this quite a, very, very knocks. That was one of the things when we first met with you folks, is you guys want to try and get this done nice and quickly, because you were really interested in doing, getting to the implementation, because you really want to see those changes. So we worked really hard on this plan and had a really good partnership with the committee and all, all of the aspects of this area. So I think the status from the KB Cobb side is we pretty much have almost a complete plan. It's in its final stages, we're going to be compiling everything together, and then hopefully we can put it out for the last public comment, and then receive any final feedback. And then once everyone's happy with that, what we'll generally do is then submit it to the state for their review. They will, you know, send it around to various state agencies and check that everything's in there that needs to meet the, meet the rule that the plans are weighed against, which is chapter 208. Once they, hopefully, you know, say everything's good with them, they rule it consistent, and then, then it would go to you folks to adopt on your timeframe. Those two things can, can happen concurrently as well. Because usually, if there's any comments to the state, they would just be like little minor amendments, but not substantially change the, the plan itself. It'll be, you know, little bits of information here and there to be added in or amended. It's not going to mess with any of the substantive parts of the plan, which has to do with, you know, the policies going forward. So the town can sometimes, it's usually not too problematic to, to work towards the adoption locally at the same time that the state is there reviewing. So I guess the, the one thing that I just wanted to make sure that we, everyone had clarity on, which Pat already already kind of teed up really nicely, was the, what's called the future land use or the designated growth area. This is a part of the plan which is required by the state. You have to, at the very least, assign what's called designated growth area for the town. And then, you know, alternatively, from that is what's called a mobile area. And I believe this distinction is non-regulatory itself. It doesn't mandate any particular regulations. The town has control over them. But you basically generate what's called this growth district. What the plan hopes to do, what the state hopes, the town will then do is, I think, direct 80% of the municipal investment within that designated growth area. So if we look at how that's kind of spatially mapped out, first of all, you take out all your protected resource areas. So anything that's protected from flood or regions and shoreline and resource protection, things like that. Take those in the equation, and then you look at the existing land use that Winthrop already has. So as I was talking about, there is a need, the real growth or change and correct, if you want to call it that, for basically what is to do with housing. So based off the existing growth areas from the old plan, we were hoping that we could propose that the future growth area essentially just maintains all the existing zones such as commercial and industrial for obvious reasons, but also to incorporate the general residential zone in its territory. So then the growth area will consist of all the zones outside of resource protection, shoreline zone. And obviously, the rural area will be left alone as the rural area. So that's something that I just would like to see make the council aware of. Hopefully, you know, get the general approval of that. Anthony, I don't know if it's possible, you could, I sent you that link today, which will bring up.
So then you can.
Oh, you're learning today. That's part of the process. I did want to approach back to the planning board. We've worked with them and a few, specifically a few members to really hopefully indicate all land use services that are absolutely concurrent with the tax maps. So, I mean, generally, what we're hoping to see is that everyone will be comfortable with the future, the growth areas consisting of the general residential district. The future, the growth areas consisting of, um, the general residential district, uh, village area, um. The two commercial zones and the industrial zone. I think that qualifies as anything. And then obviously you've got all your, you, um. You protected areas which are outside of that. And then everything that's left over is rural, rural area. So. So, um, general residential, um, limited commercial. General residential village, um, essentially, yeah, general residential village, general commercial, limited commercial, industrial. And then all the other overlay zones would be, you know, not part of that because that's all, um, section. And then everything that's left over is your rural, rural area. So your, your growth area will consist of those, um, five, five zones. And then the rural area will be everywhere else.
Can you say those areas again?
So, yeah, the general residential. The village, the general commercial, the limited commercial and industrial. So essentially you've got the, the corridor on two oh two, you've got the downtown village area. And you've got the community zones, general residential areas, which are. Are the ones that have been enforced. I think they combined limited residential and general residential to all one there, so.
So basically, don't everything but rural.
Yeah. Yeah, you can take out all your resource protection.
Well, then that's assumed, though, the resource protected area, the not promoted area.
And like I say, doesn't, this doesn't affect regulations per se. It's just a delineation that the state hopes for to designate your area. And then, um, like I say, they all did, basically, growth areas then have, um, you know, the priority for municipal investment. I mean, in, in all ground, every ground set that that has. And. Uh, particularly, particularly then when you talk about the, the regulations from O D two thousand and three, they, they talked about growth areas being a kind of way to, to, to look at the, the housing issue too. But again, that would, that would tailor quite nicely to this in terms of including all the, the residential areas, um, that are already not. So it's not, it's not, um, it's not saying that there's going to be any, any great expansion. I think it's, it's safe to say that there's enough space within those areas that you don't need to worry about expanding it past those. So that's what we're, we're thinking in terms of, um, appealing to where that growth area would be. Certainly.
I think in what we put forward, if you look on the map and you're looking along Metcalf Road. Up to Beers Road, there are areas that are rural zone. And we did suggest perhaps, right, so that's why, um, we did suggest perhaps when redoing the zoning that we look at those areas. Because some of them, and at the end of. Uh, where Beers hits down into Memorial Drive, there's a rural zone. And they seem to be tucked in amongst the residential. And it seems like the zoning board could perhaps readjust the zones in those areas. So they should not be considered excluded from the growth zone.
Yeah, um, like I said, definitely happy if it makes, you know, logical sense to, um, incorporate the, the growth areas. To incorporate certain, certain areas that are obviously, you know. Adjacent or even within where they existed. So that's, you know, we can, we can certainly do that. That's, that's no problem. It goes, doesn't go against the spirit we want to try to achieve.
Did anybody have any questions for Joel from the council? Go ahead, Ryan.
So, uh, I guess my question comes from this growth zone. On the growth zone, uh, the growth area we're talking about. Based on some of the initial drafts that we've seen, it was, it was, uh, I guess the intent to. Make housing more dense in the growth area, but then they also made some changes in the rural area. Then, uh, increased lot size, increased road frontage. Are we still making those recommendations?
Yeah, any recommendation regarding land use, um, will be, will be there in that chapter regardless of the, uh, of the. Of the definition of the growth areas. If the, if there's those policies are there that say we're going to do this here and there everywhere that's. Um, well, I mean, unless it's defined as a growth area, which that's fine, just to talk about geographical areas, both policies will still be in place. This is just literally kind of showing three different areas, like geographical areas in town that are considered growth area, rural area, and then resource protection. So any, any suggested changes to regulations will go along with that.
Okay, well, what, I guess my question is, what are the recommended changes to specifically the rural area? What are, what are we recommending in the plan currently for changes to the rural area?
To the, to the rural zone?
Yes, rural zone.
Yeah, I think that's what's wrong with.
Uh, when we were tasked with this, we were told to be general because we were not, um, the ones who were on the zoning board. And we were not the ones to be specific about those changes. So we suggested perhaps looking at the rural zone, but not saying that the rural zone should change by a specific number. So that's our recommendation going forward, that it be left as it is up to the judgment of the zoning board. Whether that's in the village zone or whether that's in the rural zone, let them pick the numbers we suggest that may be looked at. So we haven't seen the final draft, so I don't know what numbers are in it, but that's how it's presented.
Yeah, I believe the numbers were taken out.
That's, that's correct. There are no numbers in there. And it's as passive, very general in nature, where if you want to have more dense housing, you may want to consider, that was, that story, it's going to be considered a smaller minimum lot sizes. In, uh, in some zones. And, uh, ergo, you would have larger lot sizes in the rural zone. And currently that's at two acres and, um, at, at least, at least what I've heard thus far is there's not much of an appetite for, uh, for increasing that.
Okay.
But ultimately, but ultimately, you know, that'll be a recommendation that would come from the planning board. And then the council would have the final say as to whether or not to adopt that into an ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just speak generally to that. They are, one, the, the comprehensive plan itself will have lots of goals and strategies. But it won't get down to that granular level where it starts. It will make some questions about what it's trying to achieve. But essentially, it will, it will basically task the implementation and whoever that might be assigned to, it would be the planning board, whoever, who actually study that in the actual detail. What would be the, the change which then have to go through the process. So the comprehensive plan will not describe anything specifically like that. It will kind of make that recommendation to study that with the information we have. And then the town will go through its process to, to determine, you know, the specifics of that going forward.
Hey, any further questions for Joel? Um, or K D Cock in general? Any further questions or comments from the comprehensive planning committee? Okay, the board has finished asking questions after you. Okay, any other members of the public that wish to ask questions? There'll be a three minute time period. Please come to the podium. I know that, but it's. Microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's fine.
I think you said that the sewer system, public sewer system has limitations. Does not.
In speaking with.
In speaking with utility district, I asked him if we massed up every lot that was on the public sewer system, if the sewer system would handle it, and he said yes. So we have room for growth where the sewer system exists. So I guess that leads to a little bit of a concern whether it is not a sewer system. Forget kind of learning what we've been going through. So here we don't have public sewer. We are suggesting to the planning board that they review the zoning ordinance as long as it's not in the shoreline zone. Perhaps they could reduce lot sizes, not grossly, um, but reduce lot sizes. Because when subjects were first invented or updated to standards in the nineties, we were having twenty by sixty beds, twenty by forty beds. And now within the eligibility system, we could do a ten by twelve bed or eight by twelve, fifteen bed. So you have much less space needed to get your public, your household sewer in. So we can reduce the lot front because we don't need such a buffer to get the neighbors well. In my septic and my well and the next guy. So it makes it so we can be a little more dense. Thank you. Very helpful. I wasn't wearing updates. Is that what I wanted? Letting the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I was just going to offer myself a little bit of a resource. Part of my other duties is science. I'm also, you know, I'm addressing you, um, personally. So I have a record of all the new houses that we've built here in the last twelve years. Um, and I'd be glad, I'm going to sit down with the planner just to talk a little bit about that. But just anecdotally, what I can tell you is over the last two and a half years. I've had just more new construction in this town than I have in the last.
Okay, um, there's one more thing. Dan just reminded me that we, uh, the memo to the town council. Sort of indicated that the planning committee was going to take us through the growth area, uh, land use strategies. F W passage. General approaches to discourage the growth outside of the growth areas. Housing strategy or explore options for the, to encourage documentation. Kind of didn't really follow this, uh, the memo that we received. So does anyone want to pick up on that?
So, so let me explain. So, uh, there were some differences happening. Between, uh, some of the things that the K D Cock was recommending and some of the things that the, that the, uh, compliance committee, uh, was suggesting. And, you know, we're sort of at a loss as to how to, how to navigate that. We thought the council might want to weigh in on that. May want to save it for another day. You may want to just kick it back to us to, to try to work out, uh, some of your differences. But, um, um, but we wanted, that simply, the memo simply outlines what some of the differences are respective. The council could weigh in as such.
So these, that memo represents the differences between K D Cock's thoughts on certain matters and the comprehensive planning committee's thoughts on certain areas. Okay, thank you. Makes a pleasure.
Think about this. Yeah.
Okay, are there any further comments from the public? All right. Any further comments from anybody?
Thank you for the information and all of your hard work. Yes, thank you. You guys have really moved on above the, um.
So next, for clarities, they, uh, what did you both think about what Mr. Marinewood said about, uh, the designated right there? Is that how you would want to receive or do you want to do a different path?
We probably need some time to digest it.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think that, uh. I think you're studying this math a little bit more.
I know, last time we had a reason. Pardon me, um, we had on the chapter one thousand. And we got quite a bit of pushback from Congress and where it's at this figure about. Um, we had originally intended to change the whole of route two oh two to general commercial. And they asked us to keep the limited commercial areas near the public water supply, limited commercial instead of general commercial. So designated a general commercial, limited commercial areas as growth areas, might get a little bit pushed back on that one. That's all I really have to say to this point. So, okay, I'm going to make you something and bravely, that this conversation is over for the evening and we'll move on. We have a comment.
Sorry, I see like you guys are about to wrap up. Yeah, Steve McDermott, yeah, you've got about one more grant and then I have some comments. The portable aging in place program that's administered by main housing and locally would be run by Augusta Housing Authority is a program that seniors could access. And I forget whether the age qualification is fifty five, sixty two, or sixty five. Senior is defined many different ways, uh, but that's a different program that seniors can access. So one of the questions that you were just talking about is the growth area. The legislature just passed the law or statute L D seven twenty four, which increases the state's ability to invest in, uh, capital investments in housing. Of projects up to eighteen units or more. And one of the things I can see through the comprehensive plan, particularly the housing section, is that, uh, really appreciate that more. Uh, houses have been numbered in the past two or three years, but between twenty ten and twenty twenty, there was a net loss of seventeen units. And that renters and homeowners are likely housing burdened. So sixty percent of renters and renters can likely, are can likely be assumed to pay more than thirty percent. Of their household and toward housing expenses. Right? So that's. That's generally, that's considered housing burdened. More than forty four percent paying more than thirty, uh, more than thirty percent of their income just to rent alone. The other paying twenty percent or more towards rental loan. So that's something to consider when thinking about the growth area. Is how can the state's new investment policies help us develop either multifamily rental housing? Or affordable homeownership opportunities? We talked a little bit about L D two thousand and three, which was signed into law in April twenty twenty two. Which described, which defines affordable housing as housing for renters of that, that's affordable for individuals. Up to eighty percent of area leading income or a hundred and twenty percent of area leading income for homeowners. Which is really impactful and it has to be affordable for thirty years. The, the primary means to finance housing in Winbrook. Would likely be through the loan housing tax credit program or main housing's rural affordable rental housing program. Which was recently designed and refunded by the legislature. It was designed by main housing, funded by the legislature. To fund housing, uh, projects in communities that are typically, do not score well in the long housing tax credit program. And they are capped at eighteen units, right? Each of the rural character of those communities. Some projects are five units, some projects are eighteen. But when thinking about the tools that may be able to leverage, like tax supplemental financing, density bonuses, payment and move taxes, also known as a pilot. There's all different tools that the comprehensive plan could be into structure and lay the foundation for. That committees like yours, committees, boards and councils like yours, the planning board and potentially an implementation committee. Or a land use committee with subcommittees like housing. Future land use, recreation, conservation could all begin to set the policies in place. To steward the natural resources, existing development. And move our community towards what the shared vision is to ensure that we have the population necessary to sustain our schools. While also preserving our greatest asset, which is, I think, anywhere between eleven and thirty five lakes. I'm not sure, but I know I haven't ice fish on all of them yet. So I just think that's what we want to be thinking of, is what can the comprehensive plan do? To set us up to create the community that we want to save. And part of it is an administrative task, but part of it is visioning our future. Thanks for the time.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
That's back.
Do you want to stand? So in addressing the other comment about the growth zone and, um, when Anthony asked you. when Anthony asked you, are we okay with that? I would like you, as you look over this, to be mindful, we had thought that the growth zone should be in areas that are easily accessible to groups and services and schools and such. And if you look at this map, some of the general residential is quite a distance out from the general type population area. So you may not want to choose to do all of the growth zone, but maybe define areas within the zone excluding some of that general residential. It just is not, we're gonna read what we originally talked about.
Yeah, and, and if you folks do decide to do that, we just need some clear boundaries of what the designated group zone is, correct Joel?
Yeah, just either by street, so, yeah.
We did just receive the sewer plan, correct?
Say that again?
You sent us a sewer plan?
I did.
Yeah, so we should have a copy of that.
Oh, yeah, we was supposed to wait a little.
Yeah, so. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone at this point? Okay, we're gonna move on. All right. I do wish to thank the comprehensive planning committee and K D Cott for all their contributions up to this point. I know you all worked hard. Hasn't exactly been a really smooth process, but we got through it. And we have a nice end result here as far as we've gone. Thank you. All right. All right, item number one seventy two, discussion and consideration of proposal by R J D Appreal to conduct the property reevaluation effective April one, two thousand and twenty seven. I think it just looks like, and if he commented to them, probably go write the motion if they're on.
Well, I'm just gonna tee it up for Rob real quick. So you, you will recall that we put this out for an RFP. We got one response and this from R J D Appreal, which is the town's contracted assessor, which is good and that is familiar with, and is familiar with our community and with our top voices. The cost is, as Rob had previously told me, is in the ballpark, and we told you before, three thousand nine hundred, three hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred dollars in the work we began in July twenty twenty six. So he told you that they're scheduling out a couple of years in this, in his proposal, it's like that. Just as a reminder, the last townwide property reevaluation was in two thousand and seven. And again, in my mind at least, the, the biggest reason to do this is simply the imbalance between people whose property values might have escalated really highly over the last sixteen years and those that have not escalated as much. It's just a matter for people paying their fair share based upon their property. You know, interestingly, Rob's assessor agent calculated for me that thirty one percent of our current property tax base is on the waterfront. And frankly, that surprised me. I would have thought that that figure might, might have been a lot higher. And I'm assuming, you know, happens when you assume. But I'm assuming that if we go through this process, we're gonna find that that number increases just based upon what the experience has been with property, especially over the last three years. The homestead exemption is currently eighty one percent of the full twenty five thousand dollars. And that represents the fact that our property values are eighty one percent of what the state said the market values were two years ago. And so right now, the state is predicting that the ratio will be sixty one percent, which is below the required seventy percent. So all those numbers in my mind indicate that the time is now to, to do a revaluation. And I don't think, you know, we're two years behind the numbers apart from market goes. I think we can all agree that market has not slowed down over the last two years. And maybe someone like, is she still here? Yeah, maybe someone like Pat Lag could, could tell you sort of what the, what the market looks like it's doing today. So if it continues to have this sort of momentum, I think, you know, like I said, the time is right to do this. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Rob.
Okay, great. I, I think we got all agreed that we're gonna have to do a re. Inevitably, so.
I don't think we all agree.
Anyway, Rob, Bob is gonna present his proposal. Those are relevant.
Well, I really just, I mean, the proposal shouldn't stand on the merits that I provided. I'm, I'm just here for any clarification that the council would have before making a decision. I am going to really get on all the points I mentioned about where, where the market has changed over the last few years and where it's going to. The idea that the ratio for this coming up year will be sixty one percent of the tax value, twenty percent. Well, it's a little different because when we, to certify eighty one percent, we're allowed to go up to ten percent over the actual ratio. Just the way the homestead exemption game works for the state of Maine. So if our actual ratio is sixty one, we'll be able to go to sixty seven. So it's not that much of a drop, drop. But it is, again, this is based on sales that occurred in town a few years ago. So it's that lag time state has the septic state values. Like it's been dropping over ten percent every year, last couple of years.
But your reval is not gonna look at, it's not look at current sales day.
Yeah, from two thousand twenty seven.
Two thousand twenty seven, that.
Right. If the reval's gonna be through April first twenty seven, we're only, you know, early twenty seven, twenty six and twenty five sales having occurred. So we won't. Just in, it's in the vein of what this market is going to do, we just really don't know. It'll be based on market values, April first, twenty twenty seven.
In similar communities, what have you seen in terms of the evaluations on water pumps? How much have they substantially gone up?
It's been, most recently, it hasn't been a, an egregious increase because the non waterfront property has been, the desirability of the off water has gone up quite a bit, again, the past years. I can see waterfront pacing off water by, you know, twenty percent, maybe fifteen, twenty percent, but it's just so hard to speculate.
Now, do you look at Zillow, not Zillow, do you look at Zillow?
Just on late sales after they've been reported. We'll get public, we need public to check the tax form. So we're only analyzing the actual sale that occurred. Using asking prices as a guide, once we set our values, we're comfortable with the numbers that we have. We will look at those asking for, for the main, just to make sure that we are on the mark. Or we don't lose anything in our sales that are having actually sold yet.
So like all, for example, on, on the waterfront right here, we've got, you know, it indicates some of these three hundred or so units are probably people in town that also have property on the water. They may not have their primary residence on the water, but a lot of times they have second, second homes. I know some people are doing it, that they're not, you know. I guess my question, so you would have to look at if some of those sales were million dollar homes. So would you value, I mean, just theoretically, would you value some of those homes, all million dollar homes, all nine hundred and, you know, literally the same, I guess, is, is my question. Because, you know, what we're seeing, and I've said this before, you know, particularly in this real estate market, you have people that are coming in to Maine that are buying up second homes that have no, they're paying cash for them. So they don't really have an issue with how much they want to pay. They can just pay whatever they want for whatever they want from hell or high water. So, you know, I guess, and I've said this before, the last review we had, we were told the property taxes would go down. They did not. They went up substantially. So I guess my question is, you know, I think people in this town have to be prepared for this because I, I get property values probably won't go down, but at the same time, I think this is a bigger picture for the state because you're, you're getting, and it's, it's not just the state, it's across the country. People can't buy homes, home prices are going up. When does it end? I mean, when does it end? I mean, and, and, and really theoretically, you're driving people out of properties that they've probably had in their generation, in their families for generations. And, you know, I, I, I just don't see an end of it. And I, and I, and I get, you know, you're looking at current sales, but current sales, for what, for what? I'm looking at some of these properties, I'm like, Jesus, I wouldn't pay two hundred thousand, they're charging four hundred thousand this property. I mean, I just, it, it's, there's no rhyme or reason what's happening right now. And you're seeing a market that's really unheard of. And folks have never seen a market like this before. So I guess how we take that into consideration when you are valuing these properties and there has to be some sensible approach to this because if there's not, you're gonna value everybody out of the pen.
When we perform the sales analysis, we're gonna have a couple hundred sales to study.
Right.
When we start drilling down, start setting guys for the lakefront, for example, there's gonna be dozens of sales. Multiple dozens of sales. If you get a case where I'm doing my analysis and I get ten sales, eight of those sales are leading me to X amount of dollars for buildable waterfront, whatever that is, okay? And I have two of the sales are leading me to a vastly different conclusion. Those could be a couple anomalies. It could be the situation that you mentioned, that somebody just had all money in the world and started a force for them and they just want it and they buy it and they pay whatever. But when you start looking at all the sales of the masks, you'll start to see if that is not the normal, those are gonna stand out. And we're gonna study all of them. But if we say we have eight sales leading me to this conclusion for buildable waterfront lot, we're gonna use that buildable waterfront, water value on all of them.
But all those properties that I'm seeing down on the lake, and I, I've, I've looked at this for several years. You saw properties a few years ago, just a few years ago, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars. Now all of a sudden, they're selling for seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. What does that do to properties? And I can tell you right now that some of those properties, if you're looking at some of those, those houses, they're not anything special. But yet I know that somebody from out of state is willing to pay seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for that piece because they want that view. So how do you, how does that figure out? And I guess it, 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 it puts everybody in a predicament here because it's, it's a market that we've never seen before. So I guess how does that figure in?
Again, if I, if that becomes a typical buyer of that type of property, that will be the market value. When I do my study, if all of that, if that situation is occurring over and over and over again, that's gonna be in the norm of my buildable waterfront lots.
And see, that's where, that's where I'm concerned because then you have everybody on the lakefronts in, in the town, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar properties that, you know, when they were only a few years ago, and so their, their taxes are gonna triple.
You have to remember that property taxes strictly a value tax. That, and I can't take inconsiderate, considerate anything else but the purchase price. Some of those purchase prices set up a uniform valuation level for everybody. But the reason I hesitated on your first question about how much is an increase, what we've seen is unprecedented as well, is off water property, just general housing stock. Percentage wise, is then almost even paced with the water. Then it's always gonna be higher and they're always gonna increase more rapidly, but the gap is a lot less and that's very speculative. And like I said, Lord knows what it's gonna be in twenty twenty seven, but if I was doing it right now, that helps, I mean, if, if it was such a situation that we could take every two thousand three value and double that, there's gonna be no tax burden shift, right? Everybody's value's gonna double. The budget's gonna be what the budget's gonna be year to year, small increases, the mill rate will be cut in half. And there's no shift. It comes down to the point where some properties go up one and a half times and some properties double. You will get a tax burden shift under those. But we won't know that until the final end when you set that building. And what the result of tax burden becomes, I can't let that enter into my process. But I will think you're gonna see that it isn't a tripling of value compared to other water, off water property. Me, I'm sorry, me, the tripling.
Oh, I think, I think off water property, I agree with you, it's the same.
So I have, I mean, if the water, if off water was stagnant and water was the only thing taken off of this market, you would have a very valid point, but I think it's gonna be tethered quite a bit by everything going up as much as it adds. Again, Lord knows what it's gonna be more, you know, twenty twenty seven. So I will, I will be more happy as this process, going through very generally need with the council to keep you guys, you know, in the loop of what's going on. It's kind of a weird obligation that I have, I have to use my judgment and I can't let a group or a board kind of sway my final decision. But keep everybody in the know and just be, I think, a very general, but if I'm seeing some sort of trend, I think we should give some sort of, you know, information out to the, to the taxpayers.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off what Rob just said, I think that's a really important part of the process so that there is no sticker shock when, when people see that their values have decreased. Where I live, there was a, a revaluation the past year and frankly, the town did a massive job of communicating that. There was a lot of angry people who were now storming into Rob's office disputing their, their values simply because they had no expectation that that was gonna happen. So I think that's a really important part of the process.
Yeah, but see, the problem, again, the last time, the problem was, we were told exactly this and it didn't transpire when you got your damn tax bill. And that's what I'm concerned about. Whoever it didn't, it didn't.
I don't think anybody's told us.
No, but, no, but, no, but they, everybody says all the mill rates, if, if it's gonna cut, be cut, it'll be cut in half. Your property taxes will pretty much, you know, for most people stay the same or whatever.
I lived through this and it was.
I lived through this.
Yeah, me too.
And I, and I can tell you right now, for why. And I, and, and we don't even, even see what the, what the increases were that we're seeing now. And that's what I'm concerned about.
The, the difference here is that when, when the property values go up, we don't need to increase the budget astronomically to make that. We keep our budget the way it is. We keep our budget low. You keep being a, a, a advocate for keeping the budget low, which is great. And it's just gonna create a shift in the tax burden. So all those people that you're complaining about that are coming up and spending a million dollars on a, on a property, they'll be the ones paying the taxes. And conversely, conversely, or not conversely, but in addition, the, the, the people who are actually living in their homes and are using their homes for residence and not for a second home will receive a hundred percent of their homestead exemption rather than eighty one percent. It's eighty one or seventy, eighty one.
One, one thing I would like to point out, that when we do this process, there's gonna cover revaluations that have been done throughout the state this year that they're doing this way. When the new values are set, we, I, we get with the town, have a lock commitment. So when a notice comes out to a taxpayer, here's your new value, based on that new value and the budget we've set so far, here's your new tax estimate. This is before the commitment got rid of that. And when people came in to see us at the hearings, it isn't just to discuss value and not know what the tax implications are. It's the new value and the new tax. And I take it a step further, if there's a, if there's a significant change in the budget, I will show the taxpayer, your value, new values here, based on last year's budget, it's have to be here, based on this year's budget, your taxes now this much more. Just to have a vast comparison, not, not trying to drive away from anything, but just show that part of your tax burden increase is the revaluation project and part of it is just budget change. So it, it goes a long way for people to understand the two differences. And it is helpful to everyone.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but like what Linda's saying is everybody's tax is gonna go up. If everybody's taxes did go up, we'd have a surplus, right? The valuation of everybody's property did go up. Instead of shifting from the, shifting from one, you know, this group of people to this group of people, we would have a surplus in the, it funds, correct?
Lower than all.
Yeah, so, so what happened where I live, there's a, a revaluation. And, and our experience is that, as Rob suggested, our home, which is not on the water, increased by just as much as our candidate that was underwater as a percentage. And so, and so what happened there was the mill rate is almost half of what it was previously. And so, and so I wanted to just. of what it was, uh, previously. And so, and so I wanted to just pose with Rob, with the revaluations that you've done recently, has the experience still held that about a third of people pay more, a third less, and a third the same?
That's still the general rule of thumb. Because the town, I mean, there's two sides of this. The town's gonna raise their budget. And when we set a regular commitment on any year, I bring to the table my new values, whether they've been revalued or not, and the town brings in the budget and we said, no way. And there's caps on how much above your actual budget you can collect. And you set your mill rate, you can only collect no more than five percent of your budget. And that is the overlay that you guys would, would have. So if with a flat budget, there will be no tax increase for everybody, there will be a tax burden shift. There's no doubt there.
Right, there'll be a no, no tax increase overall.
The, the only tax increase overall, the only tax increase you can see overall when you're sitting down doing your budget process. The, the budget items that have gone up from year to year, that will be the overall increase.
It's likely that the people off water are going to possibly go down and the people on the water are going to possibly go up. And there would be a percentage of people in the middle that would be fairly close.
Yeah. But again, people were complaining last time around. I don't know of anybody's taxes that went down. They all went up. And I couldn't figure out for like me, what the hell was happening? Because.
The only way that it could all go up is if there was a surplus.
I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, but I, I can tell you, you were around, you were, you heard. I mean, this is, people's taxes went up substantially. So it's just, to me, it's a concern. Are they not gonna keep rising though? Yeah, they're keep spending the way we are, yeah.
I mean, given like the cost of everything else though, from talking about like the costs is just to do basic services or, you know, provide oil in the library and things like that. I mean, those are gonna keep rising. It's not necessarily.
I understand, but people's, people's salaries aren't rising in the private sector like that and that's the problem. I mean, you're, you're saying that, yeah, in, in, in town government, oh yeah, they're raising all kinds of. But in the private sector, they're not getting those kind of increases. And we're paying out more for inflation and everything else and we're getting less. That's a, that's, that's a fact. I mean, it's the way it is. And I, I get it, y- you know, people on this council can do what they want. I, 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 you know, I hear you and, and what you're saying about, you know, the, the, the values aren't gonna go down, but I just think, I don't know, I, I'm very nervous about this one.
I have one comment and a couple of questions. Uh, the one comment I have is out of those eight hundred and seventy one waterfront parcels, you mentioned two hundred and forty of them have home exemption. So out of that six hundred and thirty of, thirty one of them, uh, I wonder out of those, how many of those are second homes? So down, uh, my mother has a house on the lake. Out of the ten properties that are down that dirt road, nine are not local residents. So nine out of the ten are not.
Yeah, but that's not the one, one, that's one, that's one thing. That's not a general.
It's six hundred and thirty one. That's, that's like three quarters, that's seventy five percent of the waterfront properties. So how many are either vacation rentals or second homes? I mean, that's a good, I think that that's pertinent. I don't have that document set. And even if they're second homes, we're still providing all the services, right? But, um, and then I just have a question more so pertaining to the budget. Um, for if this, it says that payments will be made in five equal installments during fiscal year twenty six. So is that, are we setting, would we be setting money aside, um, over the upcoming budgets? And then I have another question as well.
Yes, ideally, that's what we would do is we would, we would set aside, root reverberation funds, appropriate funds for, for this expense. At, at our next meeting, we're gonna make some recommendations about how we might spend our funds and the surpluses from the past year. And then, and then ultimately, if you decide, hey, you know, we need to set aside the whole forty thousand or some of it or part of it or whatever, uh, as part of that, then that'll be a call.
Okay. And then, um, so looking at the timeline for March through May of twenty twenty seven, so s- setting the estimated mill rate, um, would be for March through May of twenty seven, would that be based off of fiscal year twenty seven? The mill rate? To go into effect in October and the following, um, April for taxes, like would residents start seeing a change in those taxes that October of twenty seven?
No, so the mill rate would, would change effective July one with the, with the new fiscal year. No, actually, no, that, that's not true. So it would be once the, the taxes are committed, which this past year, Rob, was that, that was in, was it mid-July?
Yeah, mid-July.
Yeah, mid-July.
So you may be referring to the twenty eight tax year?
Yeah.
So April fir-, my, I believe April first is, is the accepted date of the year. So is the, is the April first twenty twenty seven that would be set for commitment that would be, would take place July, August of twenty twenty seven, which could be your, your twenty eight or twenty seven slide, twenty eight budget year?
I was trying to think of what these pages would show up.
It's, it's the very, literally the very last thing listed on this page.
Right.
How about a factor reval? We're gonna do just, uh, the amount, twenty pounds or you know, something. A lot.
That's what we've developed this year. A lot of that, I've probably done in our company, we have probably done fifteen.
What, what's the, the benefits of, you know, I know it's not a full reval, but can you just keep kicking that down the road?
Well, you can, but the problem is we've got a twenty year lag from the last time the comprehensive value reassumee died. And this value set, twenty years ago, values were set, X on the water, X on this lake, whatever, for rural, average rural. If a factor reval doesn't basically re-identify those values or it doesn't take into consideration some neighborhoods that are off the water that may have gone from below average to average or above average, you know, or neighborhoods that have fallen out of favor, you're not looking at current market conditions. You're taking market conditions from twenty years ago and just pushing it up. It's a stopgap. But if we had done a revaluation five, six years ago and we're now failing our standard again, because if we look at these ratios that we're talking about, these fall measurements have only happened the last year or four years. If we met at a hundred percent since two thousand seven up until a handful of years ago, the markets changed that much. If we had done a revaluation just before this takeoff in the market where things were more water, more, more recent, you could. But to do something for, you know, that was decided on twenty years ago, you, you'd be doing an analysis, shoot for a hundred percent of market value and it's gonna be obvious very quickly that you just can't do that.
It doesn't take into account the shift.
It does not, it does not.
And the shift is, like you said, it's a value-based tax. And if the, if, if the property's more valuable uh, than it was twenty years ago compared to, you know, an inland property, you pick property A, property B, and property A is more valued, has gone up thirty percent, this one's gone up ten percent. You're, you're, and you, and you just go up a percent, you know, like what you're talking about, a, a set figure. You're still the guy with the lesser valued property or is still paying more than their share of the burden.
So, well, well, you know, and, and I have a difference of opinion on share of the burden because everybody gets the same services here. Nobody gets any different services.
Yeah, but it's value.
It's value what you can sell the property.
It's whether you drive a Mercedes or do you drive a?
Wow.
You know what I mean?
I, I get it, but you know.
You can choose what you drive. You can choose within reasons, property purchase.
Sometimes you have those properties that you, that you live in, you've had some of these people.
I, I agree, I totally.
So they're not getting anything different.
But I don't live on the water because I can't afford to be on the water. I don't, I don't have, you know, the, the value that I can't afford to pay for a property with that kind of value. And, uh, and unfortunately, that's just, it's getting driven on a site. I'll agree with you there, but it, it's still, the value is the value.
I, I see, you know, what Linda's worried is I lived, I had commercial property on the lake. And, oh, don't worry, you know, the taxes are gonna go up and the mill rate's gonna go down, mill rate never went down and we're gonna have it pretty good. And so did a lot of non-commercial lakefronts.
Well, that's controlled by us.
And I think that, well, that's when we get into this, I think the solution and perhaps where the council in two thousand seven or eight failed is when all this extra large S comes in, in property values, do we spend it up to a point or do we drop the mill rate? And that's one thing we need to keep in mind in two thousand.
We dropped the mill rate, but it wasn't as dropped as far as it should have been dropped, let's put it that way.
Yeah, exactly.
And it is the difference between what's your expenses versus what your values. And so what you guys have control is the expenses.
Yeah. So if we, as a, so if we as a council, look RJV now, we will basically be in line behind Bo again to be next in line for the evaluation. For those of you in the audience who don't know, these are all people ahead of us. That's why our valuation won't get done until twenty twenty seven. It's not, just because we're putting it out for four years, it's because they're busy and they have work to do and, and God bless you for doing this, that's, that's a lot of mileage to cover. It's a lot of mileage to cover. So.
Okay. Is everybody done with the questions and comments? All right, the chairman will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reluctantly approve the contract with RJV appraisals.
I don't think it says reluctantly.
Oh, no, I added that as a comment, I'm sorry. To conduct a property reevaluation.
I second.
Any further conversation? Okay, no further conversation. Chair will entertain a vote.
All those.
Okay, let the record show that there are one, two, three, four in favor.
Five in favor and I abstain, I mean, I, I can't say, I, I vote no because I would rather probably see a factor.
Okay, and Linda's no and James doesn't.
So, I'm sorry, I'm saying it again. I want.
Yeah, five and.
Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Rob.
Turn over the page. Item one seventy three, consideration of approval of the minutes of September eleven and twenty five, September twenty five, two thousand twenty three council meetings. Chair will entertain a motion.
So approved.
Any, any second, any conversation, questions? Okay, chair will entertain a vote. All in favor? Okay, let the record show all present are in favor. James is gone. Okay, item one seventy four, consideration of recommendations of the appointments committee.
Um, there was a slight conflict of interest on the ad hoc mooring committee. Uh, James King, uh, had somewhat of a conflict of interest, can't serve on due boards. He was on the planning board. That wasn't made aware in his application. And in that event, I'd like to, uh, appoint Reggie Conrad Junior to take his place. And Anthony, if you wanna call Reggie, um, I'd appreciate it or I'd be happy to as well.
I'd be happy to do that.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Record show all present are in favor of James's seven. All right, motion. We done it. Other business, public comment again? All right. Town manager report, Anthony, please. I'm relying on Anthony for that. He said he'd take care of it.
Don't see the hands ready.
So, uh, just a reminder, the main municipal association conference in Augusta is Wednesday, Thursday, so I'll be attending that, so it'd be, I can be reached by, uh, by phone, but, uh, only intermittently. Um, just a reminder that our November meeting, on November the seventh, or February sixth, happens the day before the election and a lot of setup of this room has to happen in order to accommodate that. So we're hopeful that you folks might be amenable to moving your meeting on the sixth over to the small.
That's fine.
And we're standing. Great. Um, happy to announce that we opened bids this morning for banking services. We got seven bids for banking services now. Um, uh, someone got their mic on, echoing over here. So happy to report that, uh, we got seven bids and we opened them this morning now, our niece and the school superintendent and the business person for the schools. We're gonna start going over those bids, uh, next week. There's a lot in those documents. But, uh, one of the vendors who had previously offered us four percent not to go out to RFP, I just peaked at what their interest rate was and it was, uh, a point and a half higher than what they had previously offered if we did not go out to RFP. So our, that process is already paying dividends. We're happy about that. The mooring survey is out. We've advertised it on our website, on our Facebook page and in the community advertisement, which is on our page.
Uh, we have one quick question on that. What was urgent about that?
This, there's nothing urgent about it. It's just a, it's just a method of getting it in front of as many eyeballs as possible.
Okay, I was just, that kinda caught me off guard.
Yeah, we're just trying to get it in front, in front of many eyeballs possible. We'll continue. The survey will be up through October the fifteenth and, uh, again, a lot of people that have already bumped into and I've asked, hey, have you taken the survey? And they have, so, so that's gonna be, so hopefully we'll get some good feedback, uh, on that. Uh, we're currently out to bid for, uh, winter sand. We only have one bid today, but those aren't due until next, uh, next, uh, Tuesday. And then we will, uh, bring a recommendation for awarding a contract at your next meeting on October the twenty third. Also at that meeting, as I mentioned previously, we'll have some recommendations on how you might consider spending the nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars surplus from this past fiscal year along with the hundred ninety seven thousand dollars in harbor funds. So we had a lively discussion, our director.
One point eight million?
We could reduce the mill rate.
You said nine hundred and nine hundred?
Nine hundred and two hundred.
Oh, two hundred, nice.
Yeah. So, um, uh, it would be a bad idea to use that to reduce the mill rate because that would give you a one-year relief and then right, we go right back up. So we're gonna use, we're, we're gonna propose using these on one-time capital.
Infrastructure.
Um, we'll also, we have a discussion, just looking ahead to the next meeting about business licensing fees. Dawn Emerson, our new town planner now, are gonna come to you with a recommendation that we have a village revitalization committee. We have met over the last two weeks with a planner for KD Todd who specializes in economic development. Today, we've met with a state official who runs the, uh, community development block grant program. One of the things that helps with, uh, downtown revitalization is having a downtown plan. Our last plan was created in two thousand, so we need to update that plan. Uh, but that's a gateway towards earning more grant monies, uh, for downtown revitalization. And the KD Todd planner suggested that we have a citizen group that can sort of help us in that process.
What's your timeline on establishing that committee?
What, you're just trying to scare my thunder for the?
No, no, I, no, the reason I'm asking is because Shannon and I, um, in light of recent troubles that they used to say in Ireland, um, if they're trying to come up with some kind of a sketch for, um, what the town council expects from a committee, how a committee should be organized. Okay, so we, if you're gonna have, we're gonna start another committee. We don't want to waste time, we have to get that done.
Well, I think, I think ultimately it'd be up to you guys to know how quickly we would do that. We'd wanna go through a process of trying to cultivate some members.
Cause we got a couple of months.
Of that, oh yeah, it'd be months.
We could, we'd be done.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be imminent. We talked previously about the vacation and, and sick policy and again, during our director's meeting last week, had good conversations about that. But one of the things that the directors convinced me of is, hey, before we do this for the non-union employees, shouldn't we see if we can at least get this into one of our union contracts? So, you know, there's some value in that. And so I talked with our, uh, our attorney about that. We've got a, a plan for how we might address that with the, uh, with the EMS union. It's a good strategy, so I won't be bringing that to you imminently, but, uh, but I think that that's something we can negotiate into the EMS contract. I think that gives us credence for then adopting it as a whole policy for the town. Uh, and then lastly, oh, uh, October fifteenth, marking calendars, the fire department's gonna have an open house, so you're all invited. Uh, I believe that's from ten to two, it's on a Sunday. And then lastly, uh, I will be out of the office from noon on the eleventh through the twelfth. Back in the office on the thirteenth.
What was the date on the fire department?
Fifteen.
Uh, October fifteenth from ten to two. That's my report.
Thank you.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Linda, would you please make a motion to adjourn? Thank you very much. All right, all in favor? Okay, let the record show our consensus that. Okay, let the record show our consensus at least.
Aaron.